Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the Morro Bay City Council meeting Tuesday, us 12th, 2025. We will have this city clerk establish a quorum called a meeting to order.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Echols?
Here.
Councilmember Landrum?
Here.
Councilmember LaFaye?
Here.
Mayor Potem Edwards?
Here.
And Mayor Wickson?
Here.
And we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. And if I can ask our police chief to lead us?
Ready to begin?
Pledge of allegiance, flag, states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the liberty of the free and fair.
I have to have that printed out.
Thank you, everyone. I think this hopefully looking at Mr. Qualick is our last meeting over here, and we'll be back to our old quarters. But it's certainly nice to have new lighting and everything in here. What a difference. Mr. Schultz, are you there?
Give us one second, Rob. We're working on the audio here. I can see your lips moving, but nothing's coming through so far. Give us just a second. Rob, I saw you talking, but I'm not seeing any audio on your microphone icon. Could you please verify which microphone your computer set to?
Yes, I can hear your microphone back here. It's just it's a little low back here. We're working on it.
Are we going to need a few minutes for him, or? Mr. Schultz, while they're trying to get your audio up, we'll move on to one item and then circle back in a minute. Mayor Councilmember reports announcements and presentations. Oh, and I just got a text. We can come back to closed session. Thank you, Rob. Updates. I'll start out and then I'll kick it down both ways. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. Tomorrow is first day of school for San Luis Coastal District in Morro Bay, so please be watching for all these school-aged children on bikes, walking, and those who might be new drivers. And we're looking forward to having them all back. I attended the Midstate Fair up in Paso Robles and want to do a shout out to our Morro Bay FFA and 4-H kids. We had a great showing. They just did such a great job. Proud of them all. And it wasn't real hot up there this year, so that was nice for our coastal kids, and the prices were great. So they were very successful. It was a lot of fun and always good to see them in these young leadership roles. Last week, I attended a Slocog meeting, San Luis Council of Governments, and also did the Waterfront Master Plan Committee tour down on the waterfront. Thank you to the Planning Department and Mr. Singwald for putting that together. And then lastly, before I pass it off, I have been the recipient of the county seat for the seven cities and the Board of Supervisors, and will be representing San Luis Obispo County as the board member for the Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council. So I look forward to serving in that capacity and look forward to, as we begin having meetings and they're still organizing, sharing all that information with you. So with that, I will pass it to my right, Councilmember Landrum.
Hello. It's nice to see everyone here in person. After my last two meetings I missed, it's really nice to be back home. I wanted to let you all know that I attended Friends of Morro Elementary, their standing meeting last week, as well as I joined in on the Waterfront Master Plan Tour, which was really super well done. I really applaud the Planning Department and how well organized it. Well, all the departments, actually, how well organized it was. There was, they had it really down to, the time was down to a T, and it was, I think everyone really enjoyed it and learned a lot. And then just a fun little note quickly that this weekend I attended my high school, Morro Bay High School reunion. I won't tell you which one it was. And I sat at a table, one of the husbands of one of the gals I graduated with, is like the equivalent to our Carlos in the maintenance department for the county. And he complimented me on the work that we're doing in Morro Bay and how impressed he was at the roads that we've done. And he said, you know, for a tourist community like, tourist destination like you are, to have put that money into the roads, well done.
I also attended the, welcome everyone, Bill LaFaye here. So I also attended the Waterfront Master Plan Tour, and it was very informative. Thank you very much for putting that on. And then I also attended the National Night Out, put on by the Police Department and the various other public agencies here in Morro Bay at Cloisters Park. That was also a very fun event and an informative event with a lot of participants from the community. And I'm also been attending the Friends of the Morro Bay Elementary, too. I'm on the subcommittee. So I appreciate everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you. And I'll jump in and say, yeah, we also attended the National Night Out. A shout out to Chief Watkins and her team, along with all the city departments who were there. It was just a phenomenal night. Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start with the Historical Society had put on a live performance of Drink Up. It's legal now. It's the prohibition and temperance on the central coast of the 1920s and 30s. It was a big success. There were a lot of people involved, include actors from By the Sea Productions, and our own Nancy Castle was the historian of the event. And I wanted to let you know, if you missed it, on July 27th, you can catch a picture slideshow with audio on slowspan.org. And if you look under Morro Bay, it'll bring it up under Live Events, and it's really fun. I enjoyed watching it. I also attended the National Nights Out at Cloisters Park. It is always such a joy to see so many smiling little kids running around with face paint on, to also watch the volunteers use the large drone that we have on hand. I mean, this thing is massive. I don't think I've ever seen a drone that large hover around above the ground on the lawn out there. And probably one of the biggest bounce houses we've had so far this year. So the kids were having a great time, really enjoyed that event. I also attended the Waterfront Tour. I appreciate what Mr. Singwald, Community Development, put on, the members of the staff and business owners and stakeholders who were out there taking part in it and their portion of the tour. It was very informative. And I'm also wanting to say thank you to all those people that did the walk and participated with us. I would say be on the lookout for more community engagement opportunities in the next two years of the process as well. And then I wanted to give a last shout out to Lost Isle Adventures. I was looking at my AAA Westway magazine, and on page 21 of Tiki It Easy is the Lost Isle Tiki Adventures and Dane Jacobs' business. And it talks about the rates and what you do out there on the bay with mocktails and island-themed music. And I just thought it was wonderful to see us mentioning this coinciding with the National Tiki Day. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. It's good to see you here. We've got a very engaged city council. I was basically at all of those events, except for the Friends of Morro Bay, because of Brown Act restrictions on that. But I had a wonderful time at all those other events with my fellow community members. Really, just an announcement tonight, we still have a seat open on the Planning Commission, and that application period has been extended another month. It will close on September 12th. So if you or anyone you know of is interested in serving on the Planning Commission here for the city, please go to the city's website and file an application. It's fun and helpful to your community. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Lucker?
Mayor Wickson, do you want to have the chiefs come up and give a report first?
Yes, please. Yeah, if I could ask the fire chief to come up and give us an update on the fires, and if Chief Watkins has anything to add to it also. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Just a brief update on the Gifford Fire. The fire is currently burning north-northwest in the Garcia Wilderness. It's burning roughly towards Pozo Road and High Mountain Road. That seems to be the most active portion of the fires on the northwest portion of the fire. It's currently, as of this afternoon, 125,648 acres and approximately 33% contained. There's 821 structures threatened. There's 4,808 personnel, including 363 fire engines, 103 hand crews, and 155 dozers. We did assign one of the Morro Bay fire engines to it on Sunday afternoon. They're at the Santa Margarita Ranch, providing support for the heli base out there. At this time, there's no threat to Morro Bay. The fire is mostly burning out in that wilderness area, but we are providing support, and we're having daily conference calls with all the fire chiefs and the fire to get up-to-date information.
Thank you, Chief. We wish them all safety.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just to provide an update, we answered the call for the AOA related to the fire evacuations and security of the overall scene. And so as of, call came in late last week, we received requests for officers. We sent two officers Saturday night, two officers Sunday night, three officers Monday night, two officers today have been out there for, these are 12-hour shifts, and then three officers will be out there this evening. Wednesday is fully staffed. They didn't need us for that, but we're waiting for calls for later on this week. So we'll continue to assist where we can. What officers are doing is essentially evacuating, assisting with evacuations, overall security, and then also assisting with road closures. So we have two officers and three officers at any particular timeout assisting with the fire.
Thank you, Chief Watkins. And we certainly are thinking about all those out there who are in harm's way. I know Supervisor Arnold, who's a friend, their ranch, and some other friends of ours are out that way and have had to evacuate. So we hope that they're all safe.
Thank you. Good evening. Just one quick announcement. I'm happy to announce that Mr. Munson, our Harbor Vitality Director, has also been named as an alternate to the Ports, Harbors, and Maritime seat for the Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council. So it's nice to have some Morro Bay folks on that. At this point, I'd like to turn my part of the program over to Mr. Singwald. He's going to talk briefly about the Morro Bay Master Plan, or I'm sorry, the Waterfront Master Plan Tour, and then next steps.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mayor Lon Singwald, your Community Development Director. I just wanted to give a brief update on the Waterfront Master Plan update process. I appreciate the council's attendance at the tour last Thursday of the waterfront. I thought it was a very fun and engaging tour. I want to especially thank the eight different speakers that we had lined up. I think the tour was just a great example of the type of collaboration between staff, members of the public, the Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee, and other stakeholders. That's the collaboration that's going to be needed, really, to have a successful Waterfront Master Plan update at the end of this process. So right now, we are really in full swing with the background report part of the plan. We took careful notes of the tour last week on the various comments we've received and the information that the presenters presented on during the tour. The traffic consultant, working with Placeworks, the primary lead consultant, has started traffic counts at the key intersection points along the waterfront. So we're collecting data. We are interviewing stakeholders. So next Monday and Tuesday, we have four stakeholder-focused group meetings scheduled. Those are 45-minute focus groups. We have them broken up into four different groups. One is community-based organizations, another is environmental groups, a third is business community, and the fourth is harbor-related. That's for us to talk with representatives from each of those groups, to hear about kind of opportunities and constraints, just their ideas on the vision for the city's waterfront area. Of course, we continue to engage with our WOMPAC, Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee. We've held three WOMPAC meetings so far over the last few months. They are held the first Thursday of the month here at the Vets Hall at 3:30 PM. And I would just encourage the public to participate. We will be having a community-wide survey that will be released, and also, over the next year, we'll have five different public workshops. As we scoped out this Waterfront Master Plan update, we really gave a lot of emphasis on public engagement and maximizing public involvement and stakeholder engagement throughout the process. So that concludes my update.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald.
And I would also like to invite Ms. Cecil, our City Engineer, and Mr. Qualick from our Public Works Director, to do a staff presentation concerning the roundabout transfer.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Greg Qualick, Public Works Director.
Cindy Cecil, City Engineer.
And we are here to give a brief presentation on a letter that the city council received last week that made some statements about city staff and about misleading the city council about the roundabout transfer. So we are here to clarify some of those statements. And we have a series of four statements, so I'll go through them one by one. First is that city staff did not mislead city council on the estimate of project completion, which we estimated at the time to be around 96%. And we were validated in June when the final invoice came, and it showed that their two-date billings were 96.4% of the full contract with GHD. GHD is our project manager. I want to clarify that the city's contract with GHD was for the full environmental phase of the project, not just the environmental reports. So that 96% of the contract, or excuse me, rather, the 4% left on that contract was to complete the entire environmental phase. And that was validated from that final invoice. Our second statement is that we saw, as did many members of the public and the city council, that GHD requested over $400 million increase in scope from Slocog to complete that same environmental phase. However, less than two months earlier, I believe it was around six weeks, in a GHD letter to the city, they requested additional scope at about $33,000. And staff did not find all of those requests reasonable. So had the project stayed with the city, we would not have approved all of that. We may have gone to council on a portion of it. So if, I'm not sure how increase in scope goes from $33,000 to over $400 million, unless something else is going on. But I can tell you with confidence that their request to the city was, again, for the remainder of the work to complete the full environmental. In our conclusion, based on our professional experience, which is varied, and Cindy has many years working on the private side and eye on the public side, is that GHD's city contract was likely operating at some profit loss due to management overruns. And those management overruns can be explained by their turnover in project managers. We've had at least two, actually three, project managers, and now GHD is, I believe, giving Slocog a fourth. And so we can talk about this for a moment. You know, on the business side, a firm makes decisions about what profit loss they are willing to tolerate before they come back to their client and request additional scope for more money. And our belief is that had the project, and this is in retrospect, had the project stayed with the city, they would not have asked for more money to complete the environmental phase. They were willing to absorb some loss because of the management overruns that occurred on their watch. Now, when GHD then goes with Slocog for a contract, GHD made a business decision to negotiate full cost recovery of that profit loss, because it was a new contract and they could. And that was a business decision of GHD's, and that is a matter between GHD and Slocog. In no way could this have been anticipated, especially because just weeks before, we had received a letter from GHD with them telling us what they expected their additional scope to be. And again, we didn't agree with all of it, and we weren't prepared to approve all of it. So there was no misleading of the city council, or the public, or anyone. Our final statement is that the city council received, and I believe Slocog also received a letter from a city resident and a chair of an advisory board in the city of Morro Bay, that contained an interpretation and a comparison between reports that were shown at certain percentages to the city council versus reports that were shown to Slocog. And after review of that with myself and City Engineer Cecil and Caltrans yesterday, we've concluded that that interpretation is flawed. It assumes that there's a proportionality to all the reports. So if the reports aren't all at 96%, that means that the project wasn't 96% complete. That's completely wrong. And I will give the council an example. And if the council wants a full examination of this, it will take hours to dig, and it would be up to the council if you all want to see that. But as an example, there may be an archaeological report that may be 100 pages, may take numerous site investigations, may take multiple subconsultants' time to complete. So let's say it's 100 pages long, and now that's 99% complete or 96% complete. And now, Caltrans has a kind of a cover sheet report that includes, and this is actually the case for one of the items that was listed in this email, there's a cover sheet report that has to be prepared per Caltrans requirements that compiles data from several reports. That cover sheet report might take three or four hours of one staff person to copy and paste from the other reports and put in the format of the cover sheet, and that's only at 20%. So showing that a report is at 20%, that's a cover sheet report, is not an aha, gotcha moment. That is, it's just a flawed interpretation. If we want to compare the Slocog, excuse me, the Caltrans reports that, rather, the GHD reports that go to Caltrans, we need to understand what is in those reports. How long are they? What is the level of effort? And that kind of analysis would take some time. We don't have that for the city council tonight. And it was also our opinion between me and City Engineer Cecil is that this is a closed matter with the city. This is now a Slocog matter. But should the city council want a full analysis of this, we are happy to undertake that and focus on that. And that concludes our statement.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. And this item is not on the agenda, so there will be no discussion or conversations about it. I will circle back and take advantage of the fact that I'm the vice president of Slocog and attended this meeting. So in my report out for council updates, I want to thank you for addressing this. As you know, I reached out quite upset after the executive board meeting, and I appreciate that Ms. Cecil and you and Ms. Lucker all addressed this issue and have followed up on it. To see a bill from GHD come across for an amendment change of a quarter of a million dollars stating that this project was 60% done was quite the opposite of where this council had taken it. So I appreciate the clarification, and my displeasure lies 100% with GHD. And, you know, I'm not interested in working with them, that's for sure, so.
I appreciate that, Mayor. And I'd just like to add one food, one item of food for thought. If it really is 60% done, we would have to believe that in four years, GHD completed 60% of the job, and in 10 months, or whatever's remaining, nine months, they'd complete 40% of the job. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
No. Thank you, Mr. Qualick. No, they're trying to bill for management overruns. But thank you for the updates. And City Manager Lucker, I'll turn it back over to you again.
Can, excuse me?
No, we can't ask questions. Mr. Schultz already weighed in. It's not on the agenda. Sorry. He just texted me because it was just an update.
Mayor Wickson, I am done with my reports and my coworkers' reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Subcommittee reports, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm Mayor Lon Singwald, Community Development Director. So as we heard during Councilmember reports, there was a meeting yesterday with the Friends of Morro L Subcommittee. The purpose of the meeting was for a representative of Friends of Morro L to present to the Subcommittee and staff some of their preliminary findings, working with a historic preservationist. I'm evaluating the schoolhouse building on the Morro L property. And that concludes the Subcommittee report for Morro L. I don't have any Subcommittee reports for the offshore wind or battery plant, power plant property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singwald. I've been told that our audio is fixed again. Mr. Schultz, are you available?
That depends on whether you can hear me.
We can hear you. Can you repeat?
Okay. Yes. Good evening. Good evening. Council met in closed session prior to this meeting to discuss real property negotiations. The two properties discussed were the lease for the Morro Dunes RV Park and the potential purchase of the Morro Elementary School site. As for the Morro Dunes RV site lease, no action was taken. It requires reporting under Brown Act. For the potential purchase of the Morro Bay Elementary site, the council unanimously gave direction to make an offer for purchase of 30% of the property under the Naylor Act, and to continue with negotiations with the school district for purchase of the entire property. It is important for the public to understand that any purchase of the property, whether partial or in its entirety, would have to be approved by the council at a public hearing in open session.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. With that, we'll move on to public comment. I have three speaker slips for items not on the agenda. Joe Solano, Linda Winters, and Kirian.
Good evening. My name's Joe Solano. I thought this was on the agenda. I guess I was wrong. I'm just curious. What I have to talk about is the fees for the harbor. I'm curious, as a mooring owner, a boat owner, a liveaboard, what exactly are we paying for? What need is there for a right raise in our fees out there? In my opinion, 170 that I'm currently paying, granted, it doesn't seem like a lot on the surface. It's very cheap rent to live in Morro Bay. It's very cheap rent for shorefront property. But as it is, we, what exactly is there? And I know this isn't question and answer, but what am I paying for? My dock? We use the Titlins Dock to come and go with our dinghy. We have to pay a $100 permit a year now, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it was supposed to be for the maintenance of the docks. Still, the dock, I could go down, I could take any member here, go down and throw boards in the ocean. They are not attached to the dock. The screws are coming up on many of them. There are some that are literally loose. They're just laying there in place. This is a very unsafe dock for guests, as well as the people who live here. This hasn't been fixed yet. Our water has been down on the Titlins Dock for a good month, month and a half. It is still not, by code, from the water district, it is supposed to be 12 inches off the deck. I put a tape on it this afternoon. The spigot is no more than eight inches off the deck. It's not within code. I haven't filed any complaints with anybody. I'm just making a statement that this isn't in code. If you're going to charge, increase our rents, get in code, get in compliance with the state regulations. Our poop sucker has just recently been replaced. For months, we had, for the last two years, for months, we've been on and off, having to use different facilities to pump out the yacht club, going up to the keeper, having to call harbor down to come and lower the poop sucker hose so we can pump out our boats, our blackwater our blackwater tanks. The harbor is in serious need of dredging. We draft 7.2 feet. We can't come and go from the Titlins Dock at low tides, especially if it's a minus tide, without getting stuck and running aground. On a minus tide, we get stuck mid-channel in front of the, there's a culvert pipe that comes out. Even at a high tide, sometimes you only have three feet of water there under the keel. So it's a seven, 10 feet of water period. Low tides, we're getting stuck there. We can't come and go at low tide. If we're going to have an increase in the funds, let's get something for that increase in our funds. And, see, I'm about out of time, so you'll have a nice day.
Thank you.
Good evening to Mayor, council members, staff, the interns. I'm Linda Winters, 31-year resident in the same mobile home park here in Morro Bay. I am here to congratulate Public Works for doing such a fabulous job on the renovation of this wonderful room. You did great jobs. AGP Video, I have a special thank you to you because apparently, when I walked in here tonight, my phone went on to Zoom, and I was getting a feedback to it of all of this meeting, and we couldn't figure out where it was coming from, and it was in my pocket. So thank you, AGP Video, for finding out where it was all coming from. I don't know why it happened. Secondly, I want to do very special kudos to the police and fire department for National Night Out. That was the most fun night I've had in a long, long time. Every single agency was represented, and I chose not to go by the harbor department because they were playing ring toss with lifesavers, and it wasn't a real good idea to be around that particular area. As of last night, we had our 576th Monday night community dinner here, and it was very, very well attended, and everyone is thrilled with what's going on as far as the renovations, as far as the hall. And we moved all of the diners out onto the patio, and the weather gods were obliging for all of us. We had a beautiful, beautiful dinner for 71 participants. And I think that's all I have to say for right now. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Linda.
I've been neglecting you guys again, and I'm sorry about that, but I have a lot of things that are very important, and honestly, more important than this. And in light of that, I've actually been meaning for a while now to, actually, to thank you guys. Namely, I wanted to say thank you for reminding me why I believe what I do, why I try to live the life that I want to live, why I adhere to the ideals that I do believe in. I like to hold people responsible for the decisions they make, even if the outcomes of those decisions are not directly in their hands, if they are simply providing the support or the apparatus to make these things happen. So I thought I might share with you. When you guys had me arrested a while ago, and I don't really know exactly what you said, because they redacted about 90% of the police report, which was hilarious, just big black boxes. I don't remember if I was in jail for two, three days, but the guy in the cell directly underneath of me, all night screaming, and I mean screaming, at the top of his lungs till he ran out of breath, that he was on fire. And I mean, you know, these people, some of them are a little crazy, and they believe these things. This man was in great agony for two, three nights, all night, pounding when he ran out of breath. It's torture. I mean, that guy was being tortured. I was being tortured. The other inmates were being tortured. They were begging the, you know, whoever that is, corrections, whatever, to please, for the love of God, medicate this guy, as is, you know, legally required, and they have been getting in trouble for. I kind of blame you for this, because again, like, you're responsible for making these Also, I actually had an officer follow me home recently. I tried to avoid him by not going directly home, but he kept circling the block until he actually managed to get ahold of me. Sat in the middle of the road, insulting me and verbally harassing me and making a complete and utter fool of himself, including badmouthing my Catholic upbringing, which was very, very surprising. And then he started to slander me to my neighbor, who ran away very quickly. Again, I mean, I blame you guys for this, not personally. I mean, I don't care one little tiny bit about any of you personally. I don't know you, you know? I see you around sometimes, and some of you, it's hilarious how hard you try not to make eye contact, which I do kind of appreciate because it makes me uncomfortable. You know, I'm not going to do anything about it, but boy, am I going to remember.
Public comment is open for items not on the agenda.
Hi, my name's Margaret Carmen. And hey, the good news, I don't have a complaint about anything specifically for Morro Bay, yay, because everybody's doing a great job. Five, zero, yes. Okay, I just want everybody to know, since this is public comment, that on the agenda for next Tuesday at the Board of Supervisors, Agenda Item 16, a request to approve and execute Amendment Number One to the Special Services Consultation Contract with Mott-McDonald Group, amending the term of the contract from September 10, 2025, to June 1, 2026, to prepare offshore wind operation and maintenance infrastructure studies for Morro Bay and San Luis Bay. So I just want the public to know that our Board of Supervisors is still going forward with this, even though, you know, from a federal standpoint, they don't want it. And I just want our people to get involved with us and React Alliance and everyone who really does not want to industrialize our ocean and kill our mammals and hurt our shore.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Nicole Dorfman. And I just want to piggyback a lot, a little bit on what the previous speaker said about the Mott-McDonald study. And I'm wondering if there's anything at all, any information that you all have that you can share about the study, or about the extension, about any work potentially that's already been done in our harbor, any communications? I'm very interested in that topic. I also want to thank you all for voting to kind of stay in the mix with the school district. I think it's really important. I want to thank council members LaFay and Landrum, the Subcommittee. I know they've worked really hard and have been really engaged and diligent, and thank you so much for your efforts, and for everybody else for going along. And one more comment I want to say about this whole ordeal with GHD, the roundabout, the Slocog. I did attend that Slocog meeting, and something's not right, the fact that GHD can, you know, decide to say, hey, we need all this much more money because of their own incompetence or whatever it is that caused them to overrun. They made a bid, they got their bid, and now they're like, oh, we need a quarter more million dollars. However that happened, I sure hope in the future that Morro Bay does not do any more work with this company. They have shown themselves not to be trustworthy or ethical. Sounds like, if I heard correctly, that they had four managers in the past year. So that shows something is gone amiss, maybe at one time. They were a great company, but at this point, they are not serving us, and something just doesn't pass the smell test to me. And I was sorry that Slocog didn't back up our mayor and vote. And unfortunately, I did vote to kind of pay that ransom there, so I'm sorry about that. I was cheering for you. Thank you.
Anyone else for items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Ms. Lucker, Mr. Munson's here. Dredge, are we still scheduled for the dredge, Mr. Munson? Is he still here?
He stepped.
Oh, he stepped out. I believe the question that had been asked about the dredging is that it is scheduled, it's been postponed several times by the Army Corps Engineers, not by us, and it is scheduled for the interchannel dredge. We have no control over their scheduling, unfortunately. We realize, but because of the, them tagging fish the last few years, that's what's been part of what's postponed it. So it does need to be dredged desperately, and I hope we're still on track for the date. To answer that, and to answer very briefly as best I can, your question about the Mott-McDonald, yes, we were informed by the county, just yesterday I was informed by Supervisor Ortiz Leg, that they're intent to extend it. I shared that with my co-member of the Subcommittee, Councilmember Landrum. We did not get much information, but we will be sending a letter from the city to respond to that. And that was money that's been scheduled to do those studies for the last year. It was a state grant, and we included a lot of extras in our share about environmental impacts to our harbor. They've asked for an extension, and we are waiting. We agreed to one regional meeting rather than three small meetings. We thought that would be in the fall, and they have pushed it out to request, as far as June next year, we're asking that it's sooner than that, understanding that they may need some time to complete the study, but not wanting to wait that the study's a year old. So we will update you, and we are responding. Thank you for that. That will move on. Does anybody else have anything on that? That will move on to consent agenda, and I will open public comment on the consent agenda. AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Anyone for public comment on consent agenda? Going once, going twice? No? With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda. I hear ooh up here. I'm going to pull 6B. Does anybody want to pull anything? No? I'll ask for a motion to approve the other items, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 6B.
All second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6B, Chief McCrain, if I can ask you up. Thank you. Good evening.
So Item 6B is a donation of some thermal imaging cameras from a local company here in San Luis Obispo. These thermal imaging cameras do thermal and infrared, and there's been three cameras that are proposed to be donated to the city. There would be, two of them would be on fixed locations, tentatively scheduled, one at the WRF facility looking towards Black Hills, and the other one at the Nutmeg Tanks looking towards the harbor and the rock. And the reason for those is they use AI technology to detect fires and immediately notify. There would be notifications sent to myself and Deputy Chief Vieira, and they can pick up a fire three meter, or one meter from five miles away, and it'll automatically detect that and notify us, and it'll help with notifying for those encampment fires and things that we're getting on the Black Hills. Looking at the harbor, it could be used for vessel fires, and also, we could put it into manual mode and look for swimmers in distress, climbers on the rock, things like that, to be able to identify where those victims are at without having to send people out looking for them initially. So it's just some technology that's available for this, for us. I have the CEO of the company here if there's any questions. I also have the CFO of the company, Cydis, if there were any specific questions related to this technology. But it's a great opportunity. Finally, the last camera would be mounted on one of our fire engines, be useful for wildland firefighting, checking for hotspots, and also for electric vehicle accidents or fires. We can monitor the battery and check the battery temperatures using that to like an iPad mounted in the cab. So neat opportunity for us. It's a donation of approximately $47,000 worth of equipment, just from a local company that has ties here to Morro Bay and is interested in improving safety here in the city. So if there's any questions, I do have representatives from the company here.
Councilmember LaFay.
Chief, I just have one question, is that do we need to buy any other equipment to make this work? And is there a maintenance cost per year for this particular equipment, or is that included in the generous gift?
Everything is included in the generous gift. Installation, the software needed to run it, and then any maintenance, because it is a local company, they've offered up the ability to maintain it for us.
Yeah, what a generous gift. I'm curious if this affects insurance in Morro Bay.
It's something that could, at some point in the future, have the potential to positively impact the insurance. It's a new technology that's being deployed. It's used very commonly in energy companies, Southern California Edison companies like that use this technology. It's a, we're kind of one of the first fire departments to try this out and see how it works for us with the automatic fire detection. So it's something that theoretically could have a positive impact, it's just so new in the process, I can't say for sure.
And then I'm just curious what the level of accuracy of it is.
So they have some videos from the fires down in Southern California where equipment that was already in place for energy systems turned and panned towards fires as they broke out down in Southern California over the last year. And within, you know, the first couple minutes of the fire, it was able to identify it and send notifications to the managers of that program.
Thank you.
Who else?
Just a comment, I want to thank the folks from Cydis, putting Morro Bay on the cutting edge. It's wonderful. Thank you.
I would agree with Councilmember Echols, and also, I was just curious, how did this happen? How did this happen?
So the owner of the company, Mr. Mendible, that's here, happens to be friends with my admin tech, Tracy, and through just a casual conversation, this came up, and the idea was bloomed, and here we are.
Well, I love stories like that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. Mr. Mandeville, thank you. I just pulled this item because I wanted to have an opportunity to thank them publicly for their generous donation. Thank you. We appreciate it. With that, I'll move approval of 6B and ask for a second.
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, sir. With that, we'll move on to Item 8A, business item, and turn this over to... Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a whole item. Oh, my gosh. 7A. I know, I got in a hurry. We have a public hearing, this twice tonight, sorry about that. We have a public, I want to get home. We have a public hearing item this evening, and I will be turning this over to the Finance Department. Let us give her a minute to get here.
We are here tonight to conduct the receipt of presentation on the user and regulatory fee study and conduct the formerly noticed public hearing on these fees. Annually, we have to review and revise our adopted master fee schedule, which dictates the charges that are approved for various city-provided services, and the user-written regulatory fees are set at the direction of city council at the conclusion of a public hearing to consider the adoption of any new fees or fee increases. The city and staff in its entirety has been working with ClearSource on this study since last October. Terry Mattson is here tonight to present the findings to us. Terry is the founder and president of ClearSource. He has 21 years of financial consulting services delivered exclusively to local government agencies, and he and his team have been a professional, knowledgeable, and pleasure to collaborate with over these last many months. And he and his team have been a professional, knowledgeable, and pleasure to collaborate with over these last many months. So I will turn this over to Mr. Mattson.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you this evening on this important topic. As mentioned, the city's at the concluding stages of what's known as a user and regulatory fee study. I'm here to present findings and potential outcomes from that study. And I'll tell you, I have about 28 slides, but I will do my best to really avoid being long-winded. I'll move quickly through them and then leave it to the City Council to take us where you'd like to go during Q and A. Do I point at a certain spot? Oh, that's right.
I apologize, we're having more technical difficulties. The slides are advancing on the laptop, but not on the screen, unfortunately. So if you could give us just a moment.
Sure. There we go. Very good. Well, it looks like we're back in business. Thank you for accommodating me. So just by way of agenda, we're going to talk through some background and fundamentals and terminology that really apply to all cities throughout the state. And then with the second half of the presentation, we'll focus on Morro Bay's specific items. So by way of background, the way we think about it is communities are generally using their tax dollars to fund services that provide broad, general, community-wide benefit. We think of this as like public safety services, public work services, park maintenance-type services. And when they are providing a service that they see as a direct benefit service, they look for direct recovery of that cost of service. Most of the time, we think of this as like permits, plan review, inspection-type services. These would be direct services to a specific applicant or receiver of service, and we frequently use fees and charges to recover those costs so that we can use our general fund dollars to provide that broad, community-wide benefit-type service. As mentioned, staff reviews the city's existing fee schedule annually. It's outlined in the municipal code, the direction of that fee schedule, and updates that occur periodically. In interim years, you inflate fees by the change in regional cost inflation, and then you can make discrete changes as needed. The most recent comprehensive study was completed in 2019. This is a comprehensive study. So you perform these types of studies every three to five, seven years. In the in-between years, you do these inflationary adjustments just to sort of keep pace with historical changes in costs. So when I say we're thinking about these service-based fees, primarily, we would think of these as like building fees, planning fees for entitlement review, engineering fees, if somebody wants to encroach in the city's right-of-way, fees for encroachment permitting. There's non-development-related fees for, you know, certain administrative functions performed at specific requests. But what's important to note is what is not being examined. This study does not examine taxes. It does not examine any utility rates. It doesn't examine assessments. So these things that we sort of encounter on a day-to-day basis are not being considered as part of this update. This update is discrete, periodic requests for service. So fundamentally, why do cities like Morro Bay and your neighbors and other communities in California evaluate their fees and periodically update them? The number one reason is to ensure compliance with legal requirements. These fees are governed by the California Constitution and the California Government Code, and they provide boundaries for what is a fee versus what is a tax. And so you want to ensure compliance with those boundaries. We talked about that idea of recovering costs of direct services and that idea that when you recover these costs, you are by definition freeing up your general fund resources to be used for some other city priority. I think the final bullet point's important as well. When we recover our cost of service, it helps position us to meet the service-level expectation of the community. It helps us continue to provide service. I mentioned that these fees are governed by the State of California, so they're outlined in the California Constitution and the California Government Code. And primarily, what they're telling us is, we don't want to turn this into a profit-making venture. We should charge, or we're eligible to charge up to our cost of service, but not beyond that. And the fee we collect should be linked to the actual cost of providing service. So if something is more complex in nature, likely has a higher cost associated with it, than something that's less complex in nature, so you would have higher fee for something that's more complex, lower fee for something that's less complex. From a terminology standpoint, in the report that you received, in my presentation this evening, I'll make reference to these concepts of cost of service, cost recovery, subsidy. You may use these throughout your, you know, your day-to-day experiences. And so we just try and make sure that we're all sort of speaking the same language as it relates to this study. From a cost-of-service standpoint, the way we think about this is you are providing a service. Morro Bay is providing some sort of service. It could be building review, planning entitlement review, and so forth. And so we identify, what is our hourly cost of providing service? We think about this as a fully burdened hourly rate that thinks about wages, benefits, service supplies. And then we think about, how long does something take to perform? You know, like what is our typical level of service provided? Does this take four hours most of the time, or does it take two hours? What is happening most of the time when somebody comes in and needs this service? And knowing those two sort of components helps us understand, what is our cost of service? Once the City Council understands its cost of service, it uses, frequently, it makes a philosophical decision of, do I want to recover all of that cost? Or a portion of that cost from the receiver of the service? And commonly, a council might think through something that looks like this chart. If I see a high level of sort of direct benefit provided, I might target higher cost-recovery levels. If I see a high level of community-wide benefit provided, I might target lower cost-recovery levels. Examples that we commonly think of is, if I want to add square footage to my home, you know, I am the one that enjoys the enhanced square footage, the enhanced property values that come from that. And so councils frequently see that as a direct benefit to the person that's adding the square footage versus, you know, if I offer swim lessons, community swim lessons, the cost of maintaining aquatic facilities, electricity, the chemicals, they can be high costs and potentially prohibitive if you wanted to recover the full cost. So a city may say, I understand there's a cost of this, and I understand that the person that's learning to swim benefits, but I want to participate in that as a city because I see community good there as well. So once we identify our cost of service, what you want to remember is, the cost of service is the city's cost. If the council wants to adopt a fee less than that, it is absolutely your prerogative to do that. But the cost has not changed. So if your cost of service is $500, and you collect a fee of $250, you still incurred a cost of $500. You would just say you have partial cost recovery. $250 came from the receiver of service, and the difference has to come from some other city revenue source. And most frequently, we would say that is your general fund that would cover that gap. So that, what you have heard, is common to every city in California. It is fundamental to, you know, cost recovery and fee setting in California. Now we'll dive specifically into what we're seeing and proposing for Morro Bay. And we think about it in broad categories. So you'll notice that your fee schedule includes hundreds of scenarios. And as a council, you're asked to make some policy decisions. So we've provided every single one of those hundreds of fees, and the fee today and the proposed fee tomorrow. But what we think about when we communicate with you at this venue is sort of these broad 30,000-foot pictures. And so what we're going to do is divide the world into development-related fees and non-development-related fees. And in the development-related fee world, we think about building, planning, engineering. If we're doing review of construction for fire code compliance, that kind of activity. That would be our development-related fees. And what we're saying is, the proposed fees before council this evening target full cost recovery for most of those services. The idea is, these are regulatory fees. We do see a high level of direct benefit. When somebody is constructing, they are enjoying property enhancements. They are enjoying enhanced property values. They get to enjoy their remodel and so forth. And if we do not recover the cost from the receiver of service, then by definition, the neighbors and other businesses in Morro Bay are covering a portion of the cost of my remodel, or my square footage addition, or my new home construction, and so forth. So the idea is that when we recover our cost of service, we avoid having other residents in Morro Bay cover the cost of my specific activities. The other things we're thinking about on the development-related side is we are trying to establish some fixed fees for minor permits. So there are permit types that come through your door sort of day after day after day. HVAC changeouts, re-roof permits, rooftop solar, electric panel upgrades, those kind of things. If you look at your schedule today, the fees are linked to like, what is the valuation of this re-roof? What is the valuation of this construction project? And what we've seen in a lot of agencies is, hey, these are relatively homogeneous activities. If I have to go out and check an electric panel upgrade, I know what to expect. I can typically expect a certain number of inspections, very minor plan review, and so forth. And so we've established some fixed fees for these services. We think your contractor community would appreciate this because they can understand, when they're building bids, they, the bids are not linked to the value of the project. The bids are just linked to the project being completed. We think a homeowner wanting to do their own permitting would appreciate this because there's less sort of to be determined. One of the other things we did was when fees require multiple divisions to review. So there are things that are complex in nature typically on the planning side of the shop. You know, for planning to say yes to something, you may have to route to building, public safety, and so forth. We're trying to capture the full cost and the whole breadth of that review, and then also minimize the use of deposit-based billings where possible so that people can get a good idea of what they can expect to pay. It improves administrative efficiency on the staffing side, and it helps with, you know, if you're looking for funding for a project, to be able to provide some, some good estimates. That's the development-related side of the shop. You also have this world that we would think of as like the recreation-type world or the reserved use of city space-type world. So we think of this like the harbor fees, the parks and recreation fees. These are market-based fees. There's not a specific cost of service associated with these activities. We're identifying like, what value do people place on the idea of being able to have dedicated use of a space? Is there a private sector alternative and so forth? So what we're seeing here is primarily just an adjustment of fees by the change in regional CPI. This avoids sort of leaving fees stagnant for an eternity and then making some larger adjustments. But every year, staff does think throughout the idea of, do my fees seem to align to the market demand for my services? Do they align to the standard of the facilities? Are there other similar services available? There was a comment about the idea that, you know, you may have some spaces that are, you know, relatively antiquated. They could use maintenance and repair. Staff actually does think through that and says, I'm not trying to make major modifications to these fees. I understand the idea that there are aged facilities. We are offering those facilities for use, but there's not any big changes proposed. If there were changes proposed, it might come after upgrade of the facilities. Then the final category is what we would consider like non-development-related fees. These are cost-of-service-based fees. These are typically collected for certain city clerk services, certain finance services, and police services. We're not thinking about like your routine patrol. These are discrete requests for services like fingerprinting, or if I drive without, with a suspended license and my vehicle has to get towed, and the police department has to support that. So those kind of things. These fees are proposed to be adjusted to your cost of service or to limits imposed by the State of California. So in some cases, California just tells you, this is what you will charge for this service. Finally, city councils frequently receive this information and say, thank you for the information. I fundamentally understand what I'm receiving and what you're telling me. I'm curious, as a council, if I adopted the proposed fees, would I be positioning myself as a regional outlier? And so we think through that topic, and we've looked at some neighboring agencies. And primarily, what we do is we say to ourselves, you know, do the proposed fees, from an outsider's perspective, would the proposed fees sort of encourage me as a prospective developer in Morro Bay to go pick the town next door instead? And our analysis says, no. That would not be the case. But in your case, maybe the town next door is determined not to be the greatest comparison. So you might say, the town next door is San Luis Obispo, but it looks different than us. So are there other towns that actually look more like us? So we've added more than just the town next door to the comparison. We think about Grover Beach, Pismo Beach, Oceano, and ask the same question. You know, what would it cost to develop there? What would it cost to permit there compared to Morro Bay? And over and over, the findings indicate that your fees, as proposed, don't exceed Morro Bay's cost of service, and you would remain in line with the region. So there is nothing here that's proposed that would sort of position you as some sort of deterrent and encourager of somebody to choose somewhere else. What you will find is, among the hundreds and hundreds of fees you charge, if you picked one, you may end up at the upper end of the spectrum, or the lower end of the spectrum, or the mid-range of the spectrum. But you're always within the range of the region. So it just depends on the service provided. But we do see you as the range of the region. We thought about small scenarios. We thought about larger scenarios. And one of the things we think specifically about is, somebody that is like the equivalent of a mom and pop and wants to comply with city rules and wants to come in and pull the permits that they need to pull. But, you know, as a council, you might be particularly sensitive to them because it's not a ground-up development. It's not a new Starbucks coming in the door. It's somebody that already lives here and wants to do a new re-roof or something like that. So we grabbed a few of those categories. You see electrical service panel upgrade. These are common permits. And you can see that Morro Bay's proposed fee is right in line with the region of Grover Beach, Pismo Beach, Oceano. Your fee today is linked to the valuation of the project. So you don't see Morro Bay current because it could vary widely depending on what the valuation of the project is as it comes through the door. But your proposed fee is a fixed-dollar amount that can be known and that does align well to the region. We did the same thing for a residential re-roof. You can see you align well to the region. And then we looked at the idea of a window changeout if you wanted to retrofit your windows. In this case, you'd be at the lower end of the region. But again, we would call everyone here within the range of the region. These are like $50 differences, $100 differences, not material radical changes. In this case, you don't see Pismo Beach because they do charge based on the valuation of the project. So we can't illustrate what they would charge. If you did adopt these fees, the anticipated fiscal impact of that action is expected to be about $390,000. to be about $390,000 based on your historical permit volumes. So we would expect about $390,000 in additional general fund cost recovery. The idea is that you're simply recalibrating your fees to more closely align to your cost of service. The secondary idea is that these fee changes are intended to offset costs that you are already incurring. So they are not for service-level enhancements, they are not to hire new humans, they are to offset costs that Morro Bay already incurs. You just don't recover those costs of service via your current fees. We recommend that you continue your pattern of annually adjusting fees by the change in regional CPI. That helps in those in-between years. It's done by most agencies that we work with. So you already do it, we recommend that you continue that practice. And I will just conclude by saying, we have never met a city council or a city council member that takes any joy in increasing fees. And so we're not sitting here, you know, under any sense of delusion that you would enjoy this process. But what we do see is councils do adjust the fees frequently because they're making these decisions about how to make best use of my limited resource. That is my editorial comment, that they have limited resource and they're trying to figure out how to use that limited resource for a broad community-wide good, and they frequently think this is a mechanism to recover that direct, offset that direct cost so I can fund some other service. Thank you so much for your time and attention. As a reminder, you make a decision about these fees at the conclusion of a public hearing. So I'll stop talking now and receive any questions or feedback you have.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah.
Anything to add, Ms. Conrad?
Nothing to add. We're just ready for discussion or questions.
Thank you. We'll start with that. Questions?
Well, I would like to know, like, how long, so just a little bit about the process. How we came to the cost recovery, 100% cost recovery, was that a, is that a, you know, did we have that as a, did I email you, Emily?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Yeah.
You wondered how we came to that.
Yeah.
And we do have a revenue policy that was adopted most recently in 2021, which states that we do try to work towards 100% cost recovery for these direct services.
Okay. And, let's see. So you, in this thing that you showed, I didn't see, when I was looking through the agenda, I didn't see the comparison to Grover Beach, Oceano, and Pismo. So I didn't have a chance, I mean, did I miss that, or?
You know, we didn't specifically provide charts in the staff report. The charts are in this presentation, but I will tell you, we looked at even more fees than what you're seeing in this presentation. So like I mentioned, we thought about large-scale planning projects, we thought about these smaller residential-type permits, and we just provided them in this PowerPoint only. But we did say in the staff report that we have examined against your neighbors, and then subsequent to our submittal, it was brought to our attention that it would be logical to also think about Pismo Beach and Oceano as rational comparisons, so we added that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that they are really rational because they're equivalent in, more in size and location than San Luis Paso, Atascadero.
Yeah.
And then, let's see. Have we ever considered, is there ever consideration, or do you ever see that maybe the cost of service becomes more efficient so that the charge, we don't have to charge so much? Or is there, does that ever come up?
You know, the way it happens, primarily the way we see it is if you modify your municipal code. So the way you could see some potential reduction in fees for certain applicants is applications that need to go before a planning commission, you make them administrative in nature, and now you've taken out a layer of cost and review. And so primarily, if somebody was going to say, how could I reduce my fees? It would be items that go before the planning commission are by definition more complex. If you make something administrative in nature, you have the opportunity to collect lower fees for a similar service.
And when you said that the cost of building, like adding on to your home, benefits the homeowner, and for instance, you said it raises their property value, isn't it, I mean, when someone, there's a new home that's being built in my neighborhood and all the neighbors think it's going to raise their property values. I mean, there is a benefit to the entire community, right?
You could argue that, but what we hear from the opposite end of that spectrum is, I would rather use my community resources towards public safety than offset the cost of your square footage addition so that I could actually use my own money for my square footage addition.
Okay. And is there ever the concern, when someone builds something, they tend to buy materials, and that those materials show up in the way of sales tax revenue? And so is there ever a point where, you know, the machine is just consuming itself because it's costing, you know, charging so many fees that they are not stimulating any purchases?
You know, I actually am not qualified to speak to that. I do not know that answer. I would say that one of the things we do think about is, if I am doing construction, I'm likely using private sector support services, and I am paying for those services, I'm paying the cost of those services. You are required to perform certain services identified in municipal code and the California Building Code and so forth. And so really, all we're doing is trying to recover your own cost of service. It is not intended to be any form of taxation or anything. It's just a, same as their architect recovers their costs, your inspector recovers the cost of inspection.
Right. Okay. And then is, just your other comment about kind of sending neighbors to the next door if your costs are too high, is there ever the theory that if your costs are lower, that all the neighbors will come to your community and develop, or?
So what we found is, and again, this is editorial in nature, but it is our world, and we do think about it every single day of the year. What seems to be the driver of development in a community is not whether you charge high service fees or low service fees. What seems to be the driver of development in communities, whether you have access to freeways, whether you have safe communities, whether people want to live in this zip code, whether you have good infrastructure. There's something beyond these particular service-based fees that are informing people's decision about where to move. And the driver, I mean, the clear examples of that is, you know, you could go to the Palm Springs area, and the city of Palm Springs may have the highest fees in the region, and a neighbor has the lowest fees in the region, but all development still wants to go to Palm Springs because they want to say, my address is Palm Springs, not the neighbor's address. Malibu can charge whatever it want. I mean, they're still governed by certain fee parameters, but there are certain locations where, you know, it's just, do we want to live there or not? That is the reality. It's not that these services are going to be the determiner of choices, what we've seen analytically.
Okay. And then last question is, I noticed that there's a fee for changing a water heater. Is that a required fee by state law, or is that just a choice, or?
All of these fees are at the discretion of the city council, whether you want to charge for the service or not. But I think a water heater is by definition required to be permitted. If you change out your water heater, you are supposed to pull a permit for that changeout. And what's, the idea is that staff would review that, ensure it's staff properly in case there was earthquakes or something like that. We're trying to avoid water damage, we're trying to avoid community risk and so forth. So you could absolutely set a $0 fee for that if you wanted, but I do think the permit is required even if you charge $0 for it.
Okay. I guess that's what I was getting at, the permit is required.
My understanding is yes.
That is correct. So all of the building permit fees you see in the proposed fee schedule are required by the California State Building Code.
And water heater is, huh?
Yes, it is.
Did you say something about, is there some criteria behind that? Like all water, all plumbing?
Any plumbing work requires?
So if someone put in a reverse osmosis, are they supposed to get a permit?
So under the California Building Code, all plumbing work is required to have a construction permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember LaPae.
Well, you might have, yeah, the question is that, okay, you answered my question here. Are we talking about the actual fees now, or just the?
Just questions for fees. Now, whatever questions you have before we go to public comment.
Okay. I noticed that most of the fees in this report here are fairly consistent with the CPI increase, except for building and permitting. It seems like those particular fees are a little bit higher. Department head Aron gave us a synopsis of building a typical 1,800-square-foot, 400-square-foot garage on a 2,400-square-foot lot in North Morro Bay. And the permits, before you even put a shovel in the ground, the proposed fee is $63,613. Today's fees is $56,000, and so we're asking for a 13% increase right now. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I would like to specify that of that $63,613, I don't have the entire breakdown in front of me, but a large percentage of that is not the user fees that we're discussing this evening, and it is the development impact fees, which we'll be discussing in a couple months.
Right. That's correct. It's $40,000, but you did increase your building permit fee by 32% is what I have here. So I'm just wondering, so we, I know that I looked at a figure that we captured 40% of our cost recovery in building last year, I believe it was. So is that why we're making up such a large percentage increase? I mean, all your fees here, cannabis renewal, so what do you do when you renew a cannabis? We've got two cannabis stores here, you're asking to have them pay a renewal fee of $6,700. What do you do to get that $6,700? Is it just a permit? I mean, you've already, you know, a new permit, because both of them are union and NHC. I'm just, you know, I'm not questioning the cost recovery, I'm just questioning the rationale of the large increase in your fees, more than anything else. And I do feel that water heater, roofing, window are draconian and should not be charged, period. I mean, I don't know, even if you have to have a permit, I put in 20 water heaters, and I told you this yesterday, I had no idea I had to put a permit in. And that's ludicrous, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm just not for charging the consumer for those three, or a fence under six feet. All the other stuff with electrical and stuff, I think that probably needs to be looked at only because of the fact of any type of fire or whatever. But, you know, I've had two water heaters blow on me, that's my responsibility. I've had to replace kitchens, and, you know, it's the homeowner's responsibility and mine. I had my roof redone, and I had to pay a $500 fee. I didn't pay it because I wouldn't do it. I called you, and my roofer paid it just because it had to be paid or he wouldn't do anything. I just don't understand why we have to charge for those types of fees. You know, because if you were doing work and you had to send an inspector out, or as we talked yesterday regarding a camera of the roof, you know, we have enough, we have a hard enough time doing some checks, you know, with our code enforcement and stuff like that. To worry about these types of things, I think is really ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned.
So I may respond with a couple comments. So first of all, I did confirm with our building inspector that we physically inspect all of the work for all permits, whether it's a re-roof or if we get a permit for a water heater replacement. I also want to address your comment about how we calculate the cost for the different permits. But first, I wanted to maybe clarify, I'm not sure that this is clear to the council and public, but the reason why you are seeing these smaller permit types called out, and the reason why there's so much attention on them, because you see the list of the, you know, water heater changeout, the re-roof permit, the, you know, HVAC permit, is because we are making a pretty significant change in the structure of the fees, as Mr. Madsen explained, going from valuation-based fees to the flat rate fees. So we're not adding any new permit types. Everything that's required to have a permit under the, we're not changing what's required to have a permit. However, under the current fee schedule, it's all valuation-based. So we could have two virtually identical re-roof projects. But depending on the contractor's valuation of doing that work, the permit fee could be significantly different because it's all valuation-based. And we're now shifting to a flat rate system, which means we have to call out all of these common smaller permit fee types and establish a flat rate for those permit types, which creates more consistency and fairness across the board. So we're charging the same fee for the same amount of work for the same type of permit.
So just to clarify, there are no new permit requirements built into this schedule?
My question is, how much money did the city of Morro Bay collect on water heater permits last year?
I don't have that exact figure. I can tell you that I did discuss this with my team, and we have not received a lot of water heater billing permit applications. It doesn't change the fact that it's required by the state.
Councilmember Upert's questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think what I noticed is that there are many of the adjusted fees that were at rates outside of 100%. Some majority were 100%, but then there were a few, like when you got to Harbor and Rec, for example, that were like 94%, 97%. I'm just wondering why.
It was, there was probably just a little bit of rounding applied. The Harbor and Rec are not really intended to be the idea of cost recovery. Remember, we talked about this as being rental of city property, and so it's market-based rates. And most of them, I would say the vast majority of those fees are simply CPI updates, and there might be some minor rounding to avoid having certain cents applied or something like that.
This may go to Ms. Conrad or you, Mr. Madsen. I think the other question that I would have is that, did you, was there anything that you recognized as being kind of different or a concern that you might see later down the road in terms of cost recovery? Just, obviously, this is a concern of mine based on planning permits and things of that nature, but was there anything that you saw that was kind of out of line? I saw one where it was with regard to, you know, reconnect of a water service for non-payment. I mean, it was 152% during non-business hours. I really appreciate that we went with a tiered approach, but was there anything really that stood out to you?
Well, I would say that on the low end, there's an appeal fee where you actually are at the lower end of the region. And we have left you, we think it's deliberate by the city council, but, so your appeal fees for planning-related items are typically in the $300, $300-$400 range. When we looked at Grover Beach, Pismo Beach, Oceano, they were in the $800-$1,000 range. So there are some areas where you might actually be lower than the region, but we think it's deliberate because you're trying to encourage somebody's ability to come in and appeal. If there were places, you know, we did meet extensively with staff and talk through, do these proposed fees make sense? And obviously, we cannot look at all 400 fees and compare them to the region, but we could say what we were hearing from staff and what we we were hearing from staff and what we were seeing, the story was the same. There is under recovery in building, and there is some under recovery in your current planning fees. And if you want to correct that, you have to adjust those fees. And if you adjust those fees, and we grab a handful of 10 samples that occur from agency to agency to agency, like a re-roof permit, you can adjust your re-roof permit fee, and you are not going to position yourself as a regional outlier. If a contractor's doing a re-roof here, and they also work in San Luis Obispo, or Pismo Beach, or Grover Beach, or Oceano, they're paying re-roof permit fees there. So you would be the anomaly if you did not charge a re-roof permit fee. And you would be the anomaly if you did not charge a water heater change out fee. You are not the anomaly if you charge a fee.
Thank you. I also was wondering, you did specific examples. You mentioned that, and we saw some of those. Did you by chance do anything with regard to events in the recreation area? Just curious.
We didn't. I think on the recreation side, it was more facility rentals. And because the, the proposals were consistently CPI, we felt in our mind that that is non-provocative.
Okay.
So we were thinking through, like, what could potentially be provocative?
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Echols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the line of questioning that's led up to this point, too. I think we're going to have some common ground with that. But before that, a couple of specific questions. Director Conrad, on page six of your before and after illustration, up at the top, you've got business license inspection fee. And I see that there, there isn't a current fee, but it looks to me like we're instituting a new fee. Is, I just wanted to verify if that's correct, and, and what actually a business license inspection fee is.
So you're saying at page six. So I'm happy to comment on the idea of a business license inspection fee. You have--
Pardon, pardon me. The most important question is, do we, I don't see a current fee. So it seems to me that we're instituting a brand-new fee, and that's the, the real--
I could respond to that question, Councilmember Echols.
Thank you.
So we have a, a business license fee. That's not what's shown on this line of the fee schedule. So we did discuss this fee internally, as we, as we did all of the fees. And this is a fee to capture a scenario where planning and building were to receive a business license application, which we have to do a zoning clearance review on every business license application in the city. And there are times where, in order for us to complete that zoning review, we need to go out onsite and perform an inspection to verify that certain requirements are being met. This isn't a fee that we commonly use. We probably wouldn't use it very frequently in the future, but we thought it'd be helpful to have this fee in the schedule, in case there's a need for it, to recover that cost.
Thank you. And just to verify, that would be a brand-new fee, correct?
It doesn't exist currently.
Correct. Thank you. My other question, and this involves our Harvard department, and this is on page 30, Director Conrad, of your before and after illustration. There's the T-Pier, item number 15, the T-Pier Electrical Convenience Fee, daily rate, $4 per day. I'm wondering if that, if, if we know if those are metered or not, or if that is simply a daily, a daily, a daily fee for that convenience.
I don't know if those are metered. Director Munson, is it possible you know?
They are not metered, but we are considering for more of the heavier users of installing meters when those do arise.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I actually, I admit, I knew the answer to that question. And we've been talking about potentially metering that since Bill and I served on the Harvard Advisory Board 15 years ago. So that's, that's a fee that I think I'll want to look at, because we've got larger vessels sometimes tying up, and they're paying $4 a day for electricity. And I know for a fact that they're using significantly more than $4 a day. My other question, and Director Munson, this is going to be directed toward you again, because it's Harbor. Our triangle lot boat storage fee, it looks like we're doing a small cost of living adjustment, or CPI adjustment there. But I was wondering if you had any insight as to the original base fee. The current fee is $120. You know that I, we've talked about this right when you came onboard, that's my opinion substantially below market rate. And I'm wondering if you could give us any insight to where that fee originally came from, because this is what happens sometimes within government, or, I don't mean it in a negative way, bureaucracy, is that somebody at some point arbitrarily established that fee. Now it's paradigm, and we're just increasing by a CPI adjustment. So do you have any insight as to where that original base fee came from?
I do remember looking into it when I first got here. I didn't find where it was originated, but I can get back to you on that. One thing I did look at was various different boat storages. And yeah, we are below in some areas, but in other areas, we are about at, at that level. And a lot of other places do it based on, they'll have different sized slips, or not slips, but spots for 25 feet, 35 feet, and whatnot. And so that's something that we could consider as far as maximizing the use of that storage area. So that is definitely something that we're still looking at.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. And then my final question, well, actually, I'm sorry, two, two more questions. I'm concerned about the level of increase that Councilmember LaFaye alluded to earlier, in, in terms of some of the specific line items for our permit fees and building fees. Conceptually, we could, or could we, conceptually, limit those increases to an arbitrary number, say 10%, because I've, in looking at some of them, they were increases of 20, or 30, even 40%. If this council, could this council make an arbitrary decision to say, yes, we need to increase some of this cost recovery, but we're, for the sake of our applicants, and for the sake of, sake of our standing in the, in the county on, on a comparative basis, we're only willing to raise that 10%?
Absolutely. The one thing you can't do is go higher than what's proposed before you this evening without re-noticing your public hearing. But you are absolutely able to direct us to say, I understand maybe the target that we would like to achieve, but I would like to get there without exceeding a certain increase per year, and just change it by up to that per year until you get to that target, and then we'll reevaluate at that point. So you can absolutely provide that type of direction.
Great. Thank you. And a last question for Director Seigold. Was there any consideration or intentionality given to the fee structure with regard to affordable housing, or a less-defined category, workforce housing, or affordable by design? In other words, housing is a major concern for this community. And does our fee schedule reflect the desire for housing to be built at entry level, at the entry, entry-level housing market, or subsidized affordable housing, or multifamily housing?
So certain jurisdictions will, in their fee schedule, specify that permit processing fees. Mostly, it's for a deed-restricted, affordable housing development is waived. That ability is not provided in our fee schedule. Any reduction or waiver of fees would require council approval, according to our fee schedule. So that is not built in to our fee schedule, and it wasn't part of our analysis.
Thank you for that. That's, those are all the questions I have, Madam Mayor, and then I'll have a lot of line, line items during discussion to, to cut.
This is a public hearing item. I will open public--
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you might have some questions. I was, I had a couple more questions, if I could ask.
Can we, we're at almost an hour on this. So can we be succinct to those questions?
I can. I wanted to know if it's ever considered that when you're buying, like, if, when we use the water heater as an example, if someone, you know, to compel someone to even get a permit, which I'm sure that they're not doing, and also spend money in Morro Bay, is there ever, like, do you ever see programs where you could bring your receipt to the city hall, and they could give you, you know, a rebate or a discount on your fees if you purchased the water heater, or whatever we're talking about, in, in the city?
It doesn't cross my plate. My plate is cost recovery, not incentive. You know, like, if you have in-house incentives, I think you would just do those operationally.
Okay. And then, I'm curious, how long each department had to work on this? Did, like, how long have, have they had to?
I can respond to that. I did provide that in the email response to you earlier today.
I might not have seen it.
Yeah. So we started this study in October of 2024. Every department had at minimum two-hour-long meetings. The first meeting to, well, at first, we provided data to Terry and his team. And then they estimated what they thought it might, the time it might take to do each of these activities. They met with each department individually to see if the department agreed with those, or had any changes to make. So I would say at minimum two hours per department over all FaceTime. And the department's also worked on that independently since October.
Okay. Thank you. And, oh, this seems like, so if there is an increase, if we do approve this, there will be an increase of $390,000 or something like that. This is taking place after our budget, and it, it seems like maybe that's somewhat out of order, you know, because it, can you speak to that at all?
Yes, absolutely. And I spoke about it in our budget workshops as well, with both C-FAC and council. We just weren't able to finish the study in time for budget development. And there's a number of reasons for that. But we weren't able to finish it. And so the 25, 26 revenue estimates are based on the 24, 25 adopted user fees. And so we do anticipate revenue increasing over what is currently budgeted.
Okay.
It all depends on volume, though. So it's really difficult to pinpoint.
Okay. And then this one is for community development. I noticed on pay, on, here it says page seven, on the, yeah, page seven, there's a fee for after-hours inspection. I'm curious if that, if that is included, and things like that. I guess that could be the case for Public Works, too. Is that included? When you say after-hours, is that Fridays?
No. So we regularly do building inspections on Fridays.
Oh, okay. Okay. And, okay. And then my last question, I guess, is to clarify, Councilmember Echols' question about the metering and the harbor. And I don't know if Mr. Munson needs to come up here, but it, does that include, because it, it's come up that we've had a lot of yachts show up in our harbor, you know, luxury vacation yachts. And is that including, is that, is that what you were asking? Is that, okay. All right. Thank you.
The public hearing item, public comment is open on this item.
Betty Winholz, several comments, and, and thanks for, I think, in my email to you all, that you've reflected a number of those back, so we understand some of those questions. With regard to appeal fees, I think it's real important that we are lower than $800. It's a very chilling effect to try to bring something forward if you have to, you know, make almost $1,000 just to get your voice heard. So I appreciate that it's stayed as low as it has. I, I would like to see it not go up by CPI every year. I think it should just be a steady amount. And, and that all of those fees should be uniform. You know, there doesn't need to be a, a $20 difference, or a 30. If you're appealing, it's a set fee. I would say that. Regarding to work, I, I appreciate the language that's in the resolution that was passed back in '21 or '22, whatever, that it says we're working towards maybe 100% recovery. And, and so don't feel obligated that you have to reach that 100% this time, which many of these fees are. They've, they've made that huge jump. That's why there's 13%. That's why, in some cases, there's 50%. There were huge jumps. And I would hope that you would say, okay, this year, across the board, let's not go above 6% or whatever number you choose. But you don't, in the billing and planning department in particular, you saw the other three departments were pretty much CPIs, or something minimal. And, and that these two, even though we're, again, trying to reach somewhere, let's not make it so unreasonable, because for me, it's not necessarily people coming in to develop, but it's our own contractors who live here, and, and do the remodels, and that might do a spec house. We don't want to hurt those people with jumping up their, you know, fees. You need to make it reasonable. And I think that huge jumps are not reasonable. And so I would say just a, a standard percentage of increase, rather than trying to reach that 100%. Let's see. And I think that that then addresses the idea of, of, you know, some of these ideas, are they really about construction, or are they about replacement? So if you're replacing something, does it really require that you need to have a fee? I mean, the, the state might say that, but do we need to charge people for that? Now, maybe if you're constructing it for the first time, yes. But if it's just, you know, a replacement, maybe that's not necessary. And it, it does affect who could afford to live here. We're not looking for the rich and famous to come here, like, you know, wherever. But we're looking for people to be able to stay here. And so we don't want to charge these large fees.
Owen Champy, a quick comment. Mr. LaFaye, I agree with you that the state should not encumber people quite as extensively as they do requiring permits. Secondarily, I have a project coming up that hasn't had the permit fees established yet. I'm just curious when these new fee increases are going to go into effect. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Standby, Madam Mayor. There is one raised hand in the queue. Judy Lynn, you should be able to speak now.
Good evening, council. I just would like to thank Mr. Echols for his input, and the other councilmen, councilpeople. Also, Mr. Luthi, for wanting to keep the fees low. And I want to say that we like being an anomaly. We are not San Luis, Pismo, Grover Beach, or any of the other cities nearby. And we like being unique. We want to keep our fees low for residents. And having something that, like an overall 10%, like Mr. Echols mentioned, across the board, is a fair and easy-to-understand formula. So I would encourage, I would encourage the council to vote to keep these fees low, and know that it's going to help everybody. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, that was the only raised hand in queue. It's back to you.
Thank you very much. There are no other public comments. I will close this public hearing item and bring it back to council. And we can start on comments in a second. I'm, I'm just gonna jump in with one thing, is that, as we talk about the need for someone to come out and inspect when you put a water heater in, I, I would share that my friends had a flood because nobody monitored. They put in a water heater, and it flooded the unit down below. So there is a reason for inspections. And what we charge is one thing, but there is a reason for inspections, the same as the roofs and all the other things. I want us to be mindful of two things. One, the, the comments about what the adjustments look like. But two, the fact that we're talking about cost recovery. And that's important for us to realize, as we're in the second year of contracts with our staffing, that if we get so far away from cost recovery, that we're sending inspectors out, and then not charging any fees, we're going to start down a path that we need to be careful of. So with that, I will start down on my left this time. Mayor Protem, comments?
Yeah, I, I want to say--
Yeah, I, I want to say thank you for this report. Really appreciate the thoroughness of it. And it helped me understand how you went about some of the, these numbers. I, I would say, obviously, recovering $390,000 is no small potatoes. You know, I find it interesting when we talk about cost recovery and we look at the general fund and I think about the Rock parking lot and how much we don't, you know, cost recovery with that out there. Every single year, it gets paid out of the general fund, for example. So I do, I do agree, Madam Mayor, that there is an importance here to make sure that we are recouping what we put out in terms of our resources. So the other thing that I wanted to comment on is that I did very much appreciate the tiered approach. I mentioned it a little bit earlier, that, you know, the more complicated something is, the less complicated something is, the lower income somebody has as opposed to higher income. I appreciated that as well. I am still very interested in, even though there is a modification with relationship to the rec departments, facility fees, proceeding, processing fees, non-refundable fees, insurance, et cetera. I understand that those are CPI, you know, increases. But I, I think that our community finds some of these events, these organizations that put on events and that bring our community together, not just our visitors together, but all of us. There would be a great amount of community benefit or community good, as you would say. And so those are some of the main comments that I'd like to make.
Councilmember Echols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a fiscal conservative, I don't like taxes and I don't like fees. Because it, and I know that none of these are taxes by statute, but they are fees. We're allowed to charge these fees under, under state statute. What that means, though, is that we're taking dollars from our residents out of their pockets and we're putting them into the city coffers. And as much as I can avoid that, I'm going to do that. I believe it's the role of the city in the first place to provide these cities. And we pay an abundance of taxes, income taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, as it is. So I'm going to try, I'm going to do my best in representing my constituents to keep these fees as low as possible. I don't know any other way to do it, Madam Mayor. I'm going to run through, I've got, I've got about 10 items, but I'll just run through as quickly as I can. And I'm using the before-and-after illustration that was prepared for us by Finance. On page two, the business license fees going up by almost 100%. I'd just like to keep those where they are. The business license new and the business license renewal. I understand Finance Department that you've taken on more on that. But I look at that as, as a bit of a lost leader for the, for the city. Because if we make this an attractive place to do business, we get more businesses, they're going to create revenue for the city. So I'd like to leave that where it is. On page three, solar, this is item number nine, rooftop solar permit. There's a flat fee and then it goes up $15 per kilowatt hour. I would just appreciate the flat fee. I don't know why, if someone is doing a larger project that they're being penalized by creating more renewable energy. So just the flat fee, $450. On page six, the brand-new fee of the business, of the business license inspection fee. I would not like to institute that as a new fee. It's, it should stay at zero, even though nothing exists right now. And then on page five, the permit plan review. I would like to see that limited to the 10% increase as we move forward. I understand the desire for planning and building to get closer to 100% cost recovery over time. But as I discussed earlier and members of the, of the public discussed, I'd like to see an incremental approach to that. So I'd like to see that limited to a 10% increase. On page nine, the affordable housing in Lufi. This one really puzzles me. Number one, the funding assistance application fee. So for an affordable housing developer, they're going to come to the city. They're going to get certain subsidies and rebates and basically money. But we're charging them, we want to charge them $1,528 to tell them how much of that money we can give back to them. Worse than that, it's, we're suggesting that it go from the current fee of 870 up, 878, up to 1,528. I'd like to see that at zero. So I propose that that's zero. It just does, it just seems insane to me that we're charging an affordable housing developer, a nonprofit developer, to help them figure out how much money we can subsidize them with or, or save them. Same thing right below that. Number two, the reasonable accommodation ADA fee. Current fee, 170, proposed fee, 478. I think, I think both of those, because their affordable housing fees should be zero. Next one is on page nine, the CDPs, coastal development permits. I'd like to see that increase constrained to 10%. Same thing on page nine with regard to environmental, limiting the increase to 10%. On page 10, this is kind of an interesting one, the sidewalk vending permit. I'm not sure quite what to do with that one. I'd love to get the chamber's input on that. I'd like to see it limited to a 10% increase as well. And then we have sidewalk vendors down on the Embarcadero, frankly, that I've received a lot of complaints about. That's, that's a different issue. That's not on the agenda tonight. But that's a fee that needs to be looked at down the road. But for now, I'd like to limit that to a 10% increase. Next one, I'm almost done, folks. Oh, sign permits, page 11. I would like to see the sign permit. I'm proposing a cost recovery of 50% on that. Again, lost leader for the city. I come into the city, I get a business license, I want to put up a sign. I go down to the planning department and they tell me that they want to charge me $764 just for the permit. That's, doesn't, that's not my design or anything else. So I think that should be at a 50% recovery rate. That shows that we're partners with businesses in town and that Morro Bay is open for business. The sign exception permit, I would, I would want some input from the director on that, but I would propose 50% cost recovery on that as well. Page 11, still subdivisions in the next section down, limiting those increases to 10%. Same thing on page 12, the general plan and LCP, local coastal plan amendments, limiting those to 10% increases. And then finally, page 13, the use permits, limiting those to 10% increases. And I think that it's either the end of my list or I ran out of paper, one or the other. Yeah, that's the end of my list. And, and I'm just very sensitive to the fact, again, that we've got a lot of seniors and fixed-income folks in our community. And I think we need to be sensitive and take an incremental approach as we increase the fees. And then I also think that we need to exercise our, our political will and our intention in terms of where fees are reduced, particularly for things like keeping business fees as low as possible for new businesses in town and incentivizing businesses to, to visit Morro Bay and set up shop here. Thank you.
I felt like I did very good at tracking you until subdivisions. The last three lines, subdivisions. Then I heard general plan and local coastal permits. And what was the last one?
The last one was use permits, 10%. So that was the category that they were under. And then the suggested increases that you have below those. And all I'm suggesting there is that we limit the increases to 10%.
And then just a point of clarification, in case the Council decided to, to align to your recommendations. Would you say that if a fee is at 50% today and the end target that was proposed to City Council was 100%, that you're not opposed to getting to 100%? You just wouldn't get there overnight. Instead, you'd limit the changes to 10% periodic adjustments?
Yeah. I think that's, that's fair to say. I wouldn't agree entirely with, with, with that characterization because I just don't like the fees. And I want to keep, I'd like to see them at 0% cost recovery. Because that's our function. But, thank you.
Any response, Mr. Singwald, before we move on?
Yes, I would like to ask for a point of clarification. So for, on page three, Councilmember Echols', rooftop solar permit residential. I think you mentioned not charging the plus $15 per kilowatt for each kilowatt of a 15 kilowatts. I believe I heard that.
That's correct.
I just want to clarify that is the current fee. So that would effectively be a fee reduction. So just to make sure that that's clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Or, or suggest a reasonable flat fee. Just the idea of the more good somebody does by increasing the size of the solar panels on their roof, they're charged more, just, just rubs me the wrong way.
I, I don't think you'd want to modify the flat fee above 450. These numbers are just outlined right in the California Government Code in 66015, where they prescribe dollars. And then the kilowatt, the per kilowatt is an exact match to the California Government Code.
Is there any restriction in the code from removing the per kilowatt?
No.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I would just like that to be a, a flat fee, 450.
And I also would like to explain the sign permit, sign exception permit and the reason why that fee is significantly higher than just a regular sign permit. So the reason for that is a normal sign permit, the lower fee is for a sign that meets the sign code. A sign exception permit is for a proposed sign that doesn't meet the code, but we give an applicant the ability to go to the Planning Commission and request an exception. And of course, any work that involves Planning Commission involves significantly more staff time to do.
Thank you. Would it, I would still recommend that the sign permit be, be at 50% cost recovery. But would you recommend, then, that the sign exception permit be at 100% to, as, as a disincentive, or as an incentive for people to follow the, the sign permit ordinance?
I think that is one, one way to approach it. I guess, on the other hand, since your recommendation is to limit cost recovery to a 10% increase for a lot of the similar types of permits that would go to Planning Commission, such as use permits or regular coastal development permits, having a 10% increase for the sign exception permit would be consistent with, with that.
Okay. I think it's a good compromise. So to be clear, I'm suggesting a 50% cost recovery for the sign permit. And then based on Mr. Singwald's information right now, a 10% increase in the sign exception permit fee. Does that?
So that would be most consistent with your other comments, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum, comments?
Yes. Well, one comment I can't help thinking about is, it's kind of funny, actually, is we had so many letters regarding the closed session about Morro Elementary School. And, and many of them mentioned affordable housing and housing and things like that. And I find it interesting that there's no one commenting on this because this really, this item really affects housing. This, this is, let's see. Yeah, we, another thing is, we always hear, in, in those same letters, we hear about Morro Bay's reputation and to do business in. And, you know, the, the, here's, no one has a problem with raising these fees. And I think that that all plays into the reputation. I, I agree with Councilmember Echols and Councilmember Lefay. I, I think some, these fees are really prohibitive and, and they prevent building. And I think ultimately that affects our sales tax and, and property values. And it affects our residents and their ability to earn an income. And, you know, our, our tradesmen, our builders and all of that. And architects, all, you know, go on and on and on. And I think that that all needs to be looked at. That, that is not added to this study here. And I, I don't feel comfortable, you know, with the information that I, I have. I, I just, I feel like I just have one side of the picture and I don't have, you know, the other side and how that will, will affect all these other, you know, businesses, really. I, I appreciate police and fire and harbor, you know, having very modest increases, if any. While I think harbor maybe should have had some more. I, I also feel like that, you know, as a council, we have, this is a lot of information. Staff had quite a bit of time to look at it and study it. And I feel like, you know, Mr. Echols, Councilmember Echols', changes are, I, I agree with. But I feel like maybe it needs more studying. And I, I, I would like to move that we continue this study. And, you know, we could go through it a little bit further. Maybe, maybe if we could agree to Councilmember Echols' modifications and take it from there. I, I feel like this is a lot of information and we haven't, you know, it's really impactful. We need to really get this right. You know, everyone spent a long time on it. I feel like, you know, we, we have enough time to take one more meeting to, to look at this. Do I have, I, I made a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so you have, you. She's asking for a continuance on the item?
I know, but I, I thought she said a continuance of the study, but you mean? No, no. The discussion, right? Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I feel like it is a study for me. So, yeah.
Mr. Schultz? Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Can you weigh in on our change in direction here?
Well, it's, it's a motion to continue the item to a date in the future. I'm not sure of the reasoning for it, other than if there's certain items that the staff can bring back or if there's other issues you want. That would be good for staff to know because I'm not sure, you know, what still would need to be done if you're going to continue the item.
Well, well, for instance, I'm, I'm hearing, I think, 10 modifications to it. And it's hard for me visually to even, you know, I'm, I'm not looking at those on a piece. This thing is so, you know, there's so many details to this that I feel like it needs, you know, I, it needs more time.
So your motion would be for a continuance to, for the staff to make that list of the motion that's been suggested by Councilmember Echols to, to be reviewed and studied by staff as to the ramifications? Is that what you're looking for?
That, that would work.
And, Madam Mayor, what I might add, too, is it, it would give, I, I support your, your motion and I'll vote for it. I think it would give each of the council members an opportunity to send, and I apologize for, there were actually 12 and I even forgot the two in Harbor. So I had 14 changes. It would give each of the council members an opportunity to submit the list to staff, their list to staff, and then have staff compile that. So then we could more efficiently go down.
That seems like a better way to narrow it down. It's just so broad, but, yeah.
So clarification, are you asking that your motion, that of the 12 changes, to be included in this next study session so that we have at least, you know, we don't have to go through this all again?
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is I will, I'll put this in a, in a little spreadsheet, send it off to Finance. And I would suggest that every other council member send off their suggestions. That way she can compile them and, and then we can have it in a concise document.
I, I accept that and I, I like it.
Are you including that as part of your motion?
Yes, I will include that as part of my motion.
And is there support, has you seconded that?
Yes.
Staff have clarification?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that, so what you're asking us to do, you will each send a list of your proposed changes and then you want them in a similar format. The, the existing fee, maybe originally proposed fee, and then with the amendment that you've suggested, that fee. Is that what you're looking for in terms of analysis?
Yeah, that sounds like a good presentation.
Pretty simple.
And the department, man, our, Emily is so good at doing this that she, I, I trust that they could give us a document that would clearly show us the differences.
Maybe a red line item to maybe a red line or something.
Right. But you're not looking for a verbal analysis, just you're looking for the numbers. Perfect.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. I'm going to ask for a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Lefay?
Yes.
Councilmember Echols?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item 8A. Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate that. 8A, are you taking this, ICM Looker?
Yes, Mayor Wickson, just one clarification. It doesn't obviously affect your motion. Did you determine a date to bring this back?
We did not. I'll allow that to council discretion, I mean, staff discretion, sorry. I'm sure you need some time to get the.
I think we might. I'm going to ask, so this was, was this a notice public hearing in the newspaper, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So you'll have to, I'm sorry, then you'll have to continue to a date certain so that we don't have to be noticed.
Thank you. Do we have a date certain? Yes.
Yes. We would suggest September 23rd.
September 23rd, 2025, is our date certain to bring back this public hearing item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald.
All right, ready to move on?
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is a Resolution 48-25, appointing Brian Stack as our new city attorney and approving the city attorney employment agreement between the City of Moro Bay and Brian Stack. Just to give you a little background, back in April of 2025, the City Council directed staff to initiate the process of transitioning from a contracted city attorney services to an in-house model and return with a job description for a full-time, executive-level city attorney. This direction stemmed from the council's desire for more consistent, accessible, and integrated legal services embedded within the city operations. At council's direction, the human resources staff began recruiting for a newly created, for the newly created city attorney position. After receiving and reviewing a number of applications, the council identified Brian Stack as the top candidate for appointment following a thorough interview and vetting process that included background and reference checks. Mr. Stack brings over a decade of municipal and public agency legal experience with strengths in land use, coastal zone policy, and environmental regulation areas. On the second page of your staff report, there are key elements of Mr. Stack's employment contract. And I will not go through those, but they're readily available there for you and the public. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 48-25, appointing Brian Stack as the city attorney for the City of Moro Bay, effective August 18th, 2025, and approve the attached resolution employment agreement. I will tell you that Mr. Stack has joined us this evening for our lively discussion that we've had so far. I'm sure he's willing to speak briefly, Mayor Wickson, when you're ready for that. And that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Stack, could we invite you up? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Getting new to, or it's new to me, late-night meetings, so I need to adjust when I eat. But I, real quickly, I'll be brief. I just want to introduce myself, put a face to the staff report, and also express my thanks to the council for this opportunity. And I'm really excited to work hard and earn your trust and provide value to the council, to staff, and the greater community. So again, thanks, and I look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Can we have a 9:30 stop time?
All right, good to know, yeah.
It used to be much later. With that, we have questions to my right? Bill doesn't have any?
I just have one question and I don't know if I'll be able to get this answered and I didn't have time to ask it prior. But I was just, on the mileage, because that has come up. I was curious, with our last contract with the contract attorney, was that, was mileage included in that?
Mr. Schultz, can you answer that question by any chance?
Well, that was an outside contract attorney, as this is an employee, so they're different completely. But yes, I'm almost certain, not only did you pay for the travel time, you paid for their hotel, you paid for the time hourly that they were even traveling to the city. So you were paid more, you were paid much more to your outside contract attorney in mileage costs than due for an in-house.
Okay, thank you. And just out of curiosity too, I said one question, but I lied, I have one more. With the $500 auto allowance, and there are other, other department heads have auto allowances, what is the average allowance?
You know, that might be for Rachel or Emily, but I will tell you that when, you know, I was in-house city attorney, I started with a car allowance and then the council removed it. But they also, at that point in time, we had city cars. We had a maintenance yard that serviced them and we had a vehicle available. So if we drove our own, there were city vehicles. I think that's changed quite a bit and that's the problem. You have to give the car allowance, because they do have to drive to other meetings or even around the city to go look at, for this example, code enforcement or other issues that might be happening. And so that's why it's necessary to do a car allowance, because we just don't have the city vehicles, as I understand it, nor the maintenance yard. Like we used to, we used to have a couple of mechanics, I think three at the time when I worked there. So, but as far as what's the normal for other cities, I don't have that information.
Yeah, because the other option I could see is you just calculate the mileage.
Yeah.
Councilmember Landrum, I can tell you that currently the department heads get $250 car allowance. However, your former city, then they're not, they're your two executive positions. Your former city manager receives $600 for a car allowance. And I will tell you that if you went to a mileage only, it would probably regularly exceed $500 a month, because mileage is pretty, 23, 24 cents a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Questions to my left? Public comment is open on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
With that, I will bring it back to council, close public comment, go to comments. And again, Brian, thank you for being here. We appreciate it and we're just thrilled to have you as part of the team. My left, comments?
City Attorney Stack, it's a pleasure to welcome you. Hopefully, we didn't scare you off tonight. But we're looking forward to having you as a colleague. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, comments?
I just would piggyback and say, you're welcome. We are very excited to have you here. This will be my first time working with an actual in-house city attorney, aside from my time here with interim Mr. Schultz. So I'm looking forward to having that connectivity and that continuity. And so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so much for being here.
Am I right? Comments? Thank you again. With that, I'll move approval of item 8A. Ask for a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Mr. Stack, we'll see you next week. Bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. With that, we will move on to item 8B. Mr. Qualick, I'll give you a minute to get up there. What time is it? Eight o'clock? Five-minute break? Five-minute break. Thank you.
I look at my, I look at my.
Mr. Schultz? Thank you for allowing us that brief break. Moving on to our last item this evening, 8B, Choro Creek Flood Plane Resilience Project Coordination. Mr. Qualick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the public. Greg Qualick, Director of Public Works, here to talk about the Choro Creek Flood Plane Resilience Project. A great cleanup item for a good night. We've got four people here that join us who can, at any time, come up and help answer technical questions. We have Damaris Hansen, Utilities Division.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for allowing us that brief break. Moving on to our last item this evening, 8B Choro Creek Flood Plane Resilience Project Coordination. Mr. Qualick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the public. Greg Qualick, Director of Public Works, here to talk about the Choro Creek Flood Plane Resilience Project. A great cleanup item for a good night. We've got four people here that join us who can, at any time, come up and help answer technical questions. We have Damaris Hansen, Utilities Division Manager. We have Confluence, Dan Heimel, who has helped us with some of the coastal development permit special conditions for the WRF. And then we have Hallie Richards. Is it Richard or Richards? No S, thank you. Hallie Richard, she is the Executive Director of Coastal San Luis Resource Conservation District. And Scott Smith, who is a hydrologist with Stillwater that is based in town. So what is the point of this project? Why are we developing it? Well, as many of you know, the city took out a coastal development permit for the water reclamation facility program. And with that came a number of special conditions that we have to meet. And one of those special conditions is agricultural mitigation. In other words, when we put the water treatment plant up on the hill, we displaced grazing lands, and we have to mitigate for that displacement. And so that is an enterprise where city staff goes to the coastal commission staff and proposes projects, and we talk about it. And so we've done that for quite some time. And we had some projects already proposed. They're listed in the staff report. I won't go through all of them, but we're happy to discuss them tonight. We had five projects. Two are already done. One we'd still like to do, and that one is just having some recycled water available for ag use or even for someone who wants to, you know, irrigate. We can have a tank with a spigot or something. And then beyond that, we had two others that we'd like to remove and one that we'd like to replace them with. And before we went too far in that, we wanted to check in with council to see if you all thought it was a good idea. So that's why we're here tonight. We found that the two projects that we want to remove were on the expensive side with relatively modest benefits. And we were looking for a project that costs the city less money but would also satisfy Special Condition 5 for agricultural mitigation. So, oh, this is the same one. All right. So what is the proposed project, this resiliency project in Choro Creek? And before I go into it, many of the council members know, we've received emails in the past from some of the folks who live in Choro Valley. They're upset about the flooding. I do want to be clear that that area is outside of the city boundary. But we, the city does have some properties there, and so we are a neighbor. And we do have a property that's adjacent to a levee that breaches often during these high-rain events. So what the proposed project is, and I'll show some exhibits, is that the city would give an easement to Coastal San Luis Resource Conservation District on city property to construct a levee so that the creek has more capacity to mitigate flooding there. And there would be some other improvements as well. And Coastal San Luis Resource Conservation District has up to $6 million in grant funds to do that work, so the city wouldn't pay for any of the work. Our contribution would be the easement. And project benefits of this, one, it satisfies the agricultural mitigation requirement through the coastal development permit. Special condition, it protects Choro Creek Road area from flooding. It protects some city infrastructure, our twin bridges, which are not twin bridges anymore, but that's what we all call them, the twin bridges. And South Bay floods, this would help a bit for those events, which could potentially save us money in the future. And then also, the project potentially increases value of the city-owned properties in the Choro Creek. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And one that I didn't put up here is, it's also a good neighbor thing for us to do. We've received a lot of comments and concerns from folks down there. And we are not the only ones who would be participating in this. There are other property owners who would be giving up some of their land for this project. So it really is a community effort down there. This is a zoomed-out area of where we're talking about. So we all recognize the harbor there and the downtown grid. And if you go just east a couple miles, you're in the Choro Creek Flood Plane area. And just below that is the twin bridges in blue on this map. So I'm going to zoom in further. This is an overview of the area. And in green, there are three properties. There's one flag lot there on the left. Then there's the large subject property that's about five acres. And then we have a little sliver of a property across the street. And as you can see, there's other properties there with some structures. There's some homes there. This is zoned agricultural, so it has pretty limited development potential. I spoke with an appraiser about this property. And at five acres, you can't really do much from an economic standpoint, running a farm or anything. You can use it as grazing. You can have a horse stable or other things. But it's not exactly a dream ag property. And some of it is in the flood zone, as evidenced by that kind of pink-red shaded area. So the flag lot is completely in the flood zone. So is the sliver lot. And then about a third of the lot of the subject property is already in the flood zone. So zooming in further, here are the three properties. They're kind of cloudy white. And the large property, the green is where the proposed levee would be. And if you can imagine, it would extend on both sides to the neighboring properties. And the blue is where the added creek capacity would come in. So that's the project that we're talking about. And here is more of a kind of technical schematic. There would also be a vehicle access ramp built. That's shown by the yellow right now. I think there's a bridge there. I've never actually driven all the way to the bridge over Choro Creek. So instead, there would be that vehicle access ramp. That kind of orange-red circle on the bottom right, that is an existing city water well that would be removed as part of this project. We have two wells on the site, and the idea is we'd retain the other well site. Neither of these wells are active. Neither of them are equipped. They cannot produce water tomorrow. It would take a project to get them going. But we do want, well, we would recommend keeping one well on the greater property just in case the city ever needed it in the future. This is where it gets interesting. And for those of you who looked at the technical memorandum that was attached to the staff report, there was some early modeling. And then there was updated modeling, which is what I'm showing you now. I did, with the help of the City Clerk's Office, update the staff report with an additional attachment. But maybe not all of you have seen it. It is fresh, updated modeling, hot off the press. So this is a 25-year flood scenario of the area. And the existing conditions, the blue, is, as you would imagine, what gets flooded. And the green is what is higher than the flood. That's an elevation indicator there. So with the proposed constructed levee, it would essentially save that area in a 25-year flood scenario. And our property, it's kind of hard to see here. I don't know if this has a pointer. No. It's that line down the middle. That's Choro Creek Road. The next slide has 100-year flood scenario. And according to the modeling, it is predicted that, again, that whole area would be protected right where that red line is. That's about where Choro Creek Road is. So that's where our property is. And now our property is totally green. Whereas on the left side, in the existing conditions, it's under a flood. So pretty big project benefit. As we know, property values are tied to whether a property is in a flood zone. The development potential of a property is tied to whether it's in the flood zone. And so there is a lot of opportunities with this. If we can get this project going, the next move would be to work with FEMA on adjusting the flood maps. And so that, again, could improve the property values. So our next step, if the council directs staff to continue with the project, our first move as staff would be to update the coastal commission on Special Condition 5 in our mitigation plan and give them updates on that. Lock in the project from that standpoint. And then we would further develop the project with the Resource Conservation District. We'd develop agreements for the easement or any other necessary documents or agreements. And we would bring back project approval to the City Council. No one is talking about doing any capital work at this time. We want to just further investigate it. Part of the investigation would also include, because I imagine the council would desire this, tell me if I'm wrong, an appraisal of the property and what the potential value of the property would be if the project was constructed. And I'll take questions.
Public comment open?
Betty Winholz, it was my understanding that when this area was put under the Resource Conservation District, that it was meant to flood. It was to help capture a lot of the soot and whatever you call loose soil that comes down with Choro Creek, so it would not end up in the bay. It was meant to capture that runoff. So I'm confused about why we want it to no longer flood. I know that there are houses there, and maybe I'm in the wrong area. And maybe that could be articulated by the rural district. What area do you still allow the flooding? And is this not part of that, or are we changing philosophical direction with this property? That we no longer, that there's another way to manage the flooding, and we don't need this to capture the runoff anymore? Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue? AGP?
None at this time.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Is there an answer for that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Dana, if you could bring the presentation back up, I'd like to illustrate it. And then I'll call up Hallie for one part of that question. So this whole area, well, actually, let's go to this slide here. If you look at the proposed, the area on the upper left still floods. And the area to that west will still flood. So that's the area that we call the Choro Flats. And this, to my understanding, the green area is not the Choro Flats. That is the area that we want to save. For what it's worth, if you're growing crops there and you experience floods like we did in 2023, those farmers take really heavy hits from an economic standpoint. That was never part of the Choro Flats area. The question of, you know, philosophically, are we going in a different direction? Hallie, was this area in green here ever proposed to be part of the Choro Flats?
No, it was not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And just, the Choro Flats for that area isn't, is, correct me, I'm probably wrong. The corner of Quintana and South Bay, isn't that where the intent is of it? Yeah, thank you.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. And I know the area really well. After spending 30 years out there on Choro Creek Road, which I have spent 30 years out there with the 4-H Club, as a 4-H leader for 30 years, in floods. It is a disaster. And for me, I welcome the opportunity. The levees break out there all the time. It floods homes. It floods ag land. People are walking out carrying their children in their hands, knee-deep, waist-deep in water. It's been a disaster for years, and the levees keep breaking and keep breaking. So if there's an opportunity to work with stakeholders and, you know, it's an easement that we give up to be able to help mitigate this and to relieve ourselves of the liability, I 100% support it. And I know we need more information. Right now, I would guess that the property is not worth a whole lot because it floods. So, you know, we're giving up a piece of property to solve the flooding mitigation, you know, and in return, there should actually be a greater value. And I know we haven't used the Asher's wellfields for years, so, am I right? Yes.
My only question would be, is, again, on that well. I mean, I know we're going to keep one well just in case. Can we keep two wells just in case, or not really? I mean, I'm just curious. I mean...
It's a good question, Councilmember LaFaye. The one well is in the project site, so that wouldn't be an option. We, of course, could drill another well on the property if we get the permit and the entitlement. We also have another well out on Canay Road. So we would have, and Damaris, do we have any other wells in Choro Valley, or just the... She's nodding yes. Yeah, please.
We do have another well, and it is on the other property that you highlighted there on Choro there. And it's also decommissioned, but it's there.
Thank you. And if we can get the presentation view up, we just pulled this out, sorry.
Yeah, there's two on the one side and one on the other, correct? Yeah.
So on that flag lot property?
Yeah, there's two.
There's two on there? Okay. So then we have, we would retain three in this area plus another one on Canay?
So now I'm thinking, it's been mentioned before that for the IPR, that that is a better option than Morro Creek? Would now, if this is done, would that make this Choro Valley a better option?
Thank you for the question. Not necessarily. The Choro Valley is not a good option from the staff standpoint for a couple of reasons not related to this potential project. One is that there's no legal framework to prevent other folks down there who have wells from pulling up our recycled water. So if we were to inject into the Choro Basin, anyone could just pull it up. There's also a permit restriction on Choro Creek. There has to be flow at that creek. CMC closing down a wing means there's even less flow than there was. And the other issue in Choro, in the Choro Creek area is that we don't have any kind of treatment system down there. So it's not that Choro Creek would be a bad option, you know, we were looking at it 10 years ago. But currently, that would be a pretty heavy lift to get there. And this project doesn't really address any of those issues.
Okay. And what is the process to update the flood maps and also the process to drill a new well? Would those be really impossible, or why would we want to drill a new well?
Thank you for the question. We'll call up Scott Smith, the hydrologist from Stillwater.
So the process for approving flood maps looks like a lot of coordination with the county, developing the designs, advanced hydraulic modeling, and ultimately, depending on the magnitude of change, you would proceed with paperwork and updated flood mapping that's facilitated through the county, but it's processed through FEMA.
Thank you.
Any more comments? And I believe Locog has a workshop coming up right now on the resiliency for that twin bridge, Choro Creek area that's been ongoing. I know some of our community members, I believe Ms. Winholz has attended one already. There's another one coming up where they're addressing that flood plane there. And going to be making a new bridge over South Bay. There's going to be a new bridge there because of the flooding out through there, so it is being addressed. Comments to my right?
Just more out of curiosity, do we know approximately how long the existing wells that are there on those properties have been capped?
Over 10 years.
Yeah, so they're probably highly deteriorated. I mean, it would be, we'd basically be starting over if we needed some wells out there. Is that fair to say? Yeah, thank you.
I think we keep them for the permit's sake to have it, but we stopped using them because of the nitrate loads. And then do we still have the, are there still monitors in the creek that monitor the flow? Is that still a requirement? No, because we're not pumping? Because they're inactive?
Yeah, we don't have anything that monitors the flow in the creek. But we do have, we do report what it is, because we can, we have someone goes out and checks it. So we do still have to report that need in order to keep our water rights permit. So we still have that active. Yeah.
Thank you. There's no further comments. I'll make a motion to approve item 8B and ask for a second.
I got a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Qualick. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Sorry it's so late.
Thank you.
Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items? Anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I was wondering, I don't know, this may be coming back, but I was looking to kind of discuss event policy. Take a look at our event policy, if there is one. I know that, I believe, we may have been looking at it, but I want to get support for that. We've got a lot of organizations out here that put on events that are great for the community, that are of value to us as a community. And I think, you know, looking at the rates tonight, kind of made me also, maybe that comes into that discussion a little bit, not sure. But I wanted to throw that out there for support.
I'll second that.
ICM Lucker, I know you may not, is that in our, I know that Mr. Carmichael was working on that before. Is it still ongoing?
I don't think it's gone to, I think it's still in a draft phase. I'm not, I don't believe it's gone to the RNP Commission yet, or the Recreation Services Commission. Maybe it's still RNP Commission. But it is something, we've talked about it before, Mr. Carmichael and myself. And it feels like it needs some clar, it needs some clarification. The fee is so...
So we can put that on the planning track then? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
It'll be a little bit out, probably, because we brought these other items that are time-sensitive. Okay? With that, we're adjourned.